All right, Vice Mayor Weber. I understand that you are helping us run this meeting today and we have a quorum if you are ready to get going.
Okey doke. So with that, do we have a flag? I guess I can introduce the meeting that we are calling to order the joint regular meeting of the Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Wednesday, September 22, 2021. Madam Clerk, do you know if we have a flag?
Madam Vice Mayor, we do have a flag in chambers and we're ready to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Councilmember Jarden, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And I have a question, Madam Clerk, before we go there to roll call. I don't know, I cannot see much of anything. So I hope that you will be able to help me.
All right.
I can't, in the screen level, when we see the flag and the dais, I cannot see anything there. And I don't know if it's too dark and maybe that's my problem, but I just wanted to share that. So I will need a lot of help from all of you, if you will, please.
So Madam Vice Mayor, at this point, because they're just showing the dais, City Manager Thornley is sitting there, but once we actually go into presentations and discussion, you'll see the screen in full view digitally, so it shouldn't be quite so hard to see.
Okay. Thank you. There he is.
There's nothing to see on the dais.
All right, I will go ahead and take roll.
Thank you, please.
Councilmember Breckus, absent at this time. Councilmember Dour, absent at this time. Councilmember Delgado, absent at this time. Vice Mayor Weber.
Here.
Councilmember Jarden.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Mayor Sheevy.
Here.
Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Thank you so much. Well, back to you with, for public comment.
Thank you so much. Our first item today is public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to both matters on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Mornings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenter today is Manuel Maderos, followed by Cassie Goodman, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning, everyone from the city of Reno. My name is Manuel Maderos. I'm the Language Access Specialist for the Northern Nevada International Center, leading Nevada's global engagement. I'm here standing next to Dr. Hamza, who will come up here very briefly to talk about how thankful we are to all of you for your contributions to our immigrant population. So go ahead, Dr. Hamza.
Thank you very much, Manuel. My name is Dr. Hamza Asma, and I work with the NNIC. So the NNIC is the local refugee resettlement agency, and as of now, we are gearing to resettle a number of Afghan families that have been displaced by the recent events in their country. So we engage our community members through citizen diplomacy and offer opportunities for community members to meet our amazing people from around the world, like myself. So this year, our annual Global Gala, which is our main fundraising event, will be held on October 15, 2021, at the National Automobile Museum. Please support us as we provide essential services to our newly arrived community members. Thank you.
Many of you should be getting a packet from us, so if you're virtual, you're missing out, we're having a party here. But I wanted to let you know that you'll be receiving a packet from the gateways for growth. We released data from the national organization that highlights the contributions of immigrants in Washoe County, and the city of Reno was a great contributor in effort with New American Economy. So you'll be receiving that packet to understand data on the population and how immigrants really contribute to the economy of the city of Washoe County and obviously throughout our country. Also, in your packet, you will be receiving information about a podcast that we actually started with your support. It's called Diplo Chats, with a Z at the end, and that is really to highlight the work that the Northern Nevada International Center has actually contributed to, not only here in Nevada, but also across the country and globally. And we wanted to also highlight many alumni, many refugees that we actually resettle and tell their story through our podcast. So we want to thank you so much for all your continued work, contributions, and thank you for everything you've done for us and you continue to do. Please join us at our Global Gala, October 15, like Dr. Hamza said, and if you have any questions, I'm pretty sure you can get it from us. So on behalf of the Northern Nevada International Center, leading Nevada's global engagement, thank you all so much for your beautiful contributions to us, and we're so thankful that you support our refugees, our immigrants, and us as a whole organization affiliated with the University of Nevada Reno. So thank you so much. I have 25 seconds. I could sing, I could dance, but no, I won't do that and embarrass myself. Thank you so much.
Cassie Goodman, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by John Locke.
Good morning. I'm Cassie Goodman. I'm a Programs Manager with Nevada Cancer Coalition, and I'm here today with Carrie Harrington, our Executive Director, and Christine Thompson, our Smoke Free Truckee Meadows Project Manager, on behalf of the Paint Nevada Pink campaign. And our entire coalition and partners would like to thank Councilmember Jarden and the entire Reno City Council for their generous donation to change the light bulbs to pink in the Reno Arch for the month of October, to promote breast cancer screening and early detection across Nevada. This campaign aims to increase breast cancer screening rates and reduce late-stage diagnosis in our state by encouraging all Nevadans to take the pledge to schedule a mammogram within the next 12 months or to remind a loved one to do so. Through this generous donation, we will once again be able to use the iconic Reno Arch to remind everyone in our community that mammograms save lives. On October 2, we would like to invite everyone to join us on Virginia Street, under the Reno Arch, to kick off the Third Annual Paint Nevada Pink Campaign. We will be at this event from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. with the lighting of the arch at 7:00. For more information, you can go to paintnevadapink.com. And again, on behalf of the coalition, our partners in this campaign, we thank you for the donation and the support of Paint Nevada Pink. Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by John Locke, followed by Isla Abartman.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again, and today I'd like to address the process of adaptation and its part in homelessness. After all the other things that I've addressed, this might sound a bit strange, but I'm really slow when it comes to adapting to any kind of change. The coronavirus came to us at the same time as our changing to daylight savings time, and trying to adapt to both of them at once, for me, took a long, long time. Just imagine losing your job, a job that you really enjoyed, and then having to adapt to being unemployed. Imagine losing your home that you had lived in for years. Trying to adapt to being homeless could involve a lot of tears. Imagine being hungry, having no food and having no table. Trying to adapt to that, I would not be able. Imagine being in poor health and just barely staying alive and trying to adapt to a struggle to survive. Imagine being mentally ill and living in distress and not being able to adapt to such stress. Imagine being a child and not going to school, not learning with other kids and feeling like a fool. Sometimes it's really hard to find a way of adaptation to any kind of changes in such a situation. I've wondered what it would be like to be homeless and to walk a mile in their shoes. I've learned that some aren't able to walk a mile. I've learned that some of them don't have any shoes. This coronavirus has become quite a rival, but it has inspired some people to learn methods of survival. I'd like to thank the Reno ambassadors for the job that they do. I've seen them helping homeless people and trying to advise them, too. And I'd like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to seeing you again when I have even more to say. Thank you.
John Locke, followed by Isla Abartman.
Good morning. My name is John Locke. I work for the RTC Ride. I'm a driver. The company that runs it is Keolis. They have taken a good bus system down to nothing. We are running on a skeleton bus schedule thanks to the RTC Board and the people that run it. I work for them. I enjoy my job, but this has got to stop. Keolis has got to go. They're wasting my tax dollars, your tax dollars, on frivolous garbage that they shouldn't be doing. They're firing people for no reason other than to, "We don't like you." These people are getting their jobs back, thankfully, but you can't run a bus system like you run a corporation. You have to have compassion for your drivers. If you don't, they're going to walk. We've gone through 60 people in a short amount of time. We're supposed to be at 176 people. We're below 120 yet again. I hope sometime, somewhere, somebody gets a clue and gets rid of Keolis and quits wasting our taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Isla Abartman.
Good morning. As usual, I anticipate a lot of backpedding and congratulating up there on the virtual dais today. As a member of the public, my role here is to balance that out. Your guys' job is obviously to maintain the illusion that things are going well, and our job is to disillusion people and tell them when they're not in fact going well and hold you accountable. Today, I'll be talking about a couple of things that are mentioned on the agenda. My first big disappointment that I'd like to talk about is later on in the agenda item, whose number I forgot, where the city mentions passing the buck for homeless services over to the county. Now, people listening and people here who don't know, the result of the Stop the Sweeps protest was a few failed meetings with the city, where we went through some negotiations. The city made some disingenuous commitments to RISE to open a women's-only safe camp, and then, for reasons we don't really know, pulled the rug out from under them, and here we are again, basically having the same conversation we were then. The CARES campus is not a safe facility for anybody, but most of all, it's not safe for women. There have already been reports of rapes and sexual assaults, and the Women's and Family Shelter is full because of the brutal sweeps. I don't think that the distinction between housing and homeless services is a necessary one. The city is claiming that they're transitioning homeless services to the county so that they can focus on housing. I don't think that those are two separate things, and I think that that is just a way to maintain control and, like I said before, pass the buck. The city can certainly continue working on both of those things. They can continue to work with RISE. They can use the now unused or underutilized Wrecker Street Shelter to open at least a temporary facility for women. They can open a women's-only safe camp. They can do a lot more than they're doing right now. That agenda item, I think, is a failure. Passing the buck like that basically is an admission that, hey, we couldn't figure it out, so you guys do it now. Another thing I'd like to mention today, of course, and this is, I'm only really mentioning this because of how it gets sensationalized, but I think it's important, is E1, the whip ordinance. This is an obvious attempt to criminalize an already vulnerable population and create more reasons to cite people and harass people and kettle them out of downtown to please the neoliberal downtown business partnership, or whatever it's called. I think it's ridiculous that Joey Gilbert and his LARPing goons are allowed to walk around with AK-47s or M16s or whatever they have down there without so much as a peep, and yet here we are actually discussing an ordinance about whips. It's clear to me what the real threat is. In my eyes, it is actual violence, and I can tell that in the city's eyes, it is basically, like I said, an excuse to please the economic pressures that they are under, as usual. Please consider serving the public and the vulnerable rather than those with the deeper pockets. Finally, I'd like to just comment on the dystopian nature of this meeting here and the fact that I'm addressing a virtual council like I'm on the starship Enterprise when we're talking about banning whips outside in the streets and we don't have a place for our most vulnerable people to go. Thank you.
We have three voicemails to play at this time.
To prevent some kind of accident, a crosswalk needs to be installed at the intersection of Neal Road, Coral Academy, and Double Edge Fitness. School gets out there every day, and there needs to be a crosswalk there. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to address the camping problem that you have on Wells and exit 80 West. There must be 30 tents in there. If we spent $11 million for a shelter, I don't see why we're still allowing them to use that as a camping ground. Also, there's the problem of them stealing shopping carts. When do we stop charging people with receiving stolen goods or stealing? Those baskets cost $150 apiece, and you just let them walk around with them all day long. They either do something or get some people in there that will do something.
Hi. I'm walking through Wingfield Park by downtown, and that whole area along the river is probably the most trashed I've ever seen it. It's full of homeless people. They have semi-permanent tents set up. There is trash literally everywhere. A lot of it's going into the river. I know we have really strict littering laws. It's terrible for the environment. It's terrible for the ecosystems, and we just allow it to persist. And I think this is the worst I've ever seen it. And I just really want to know what's going to be done about it and when, because it's extremely disappointing. We've invested a lot of money, taken on debt to build a beautiful riverwalk, beautiful parks, but they're full of trash and they're unusable by the general public. All of my friends refuse to take their kids down to Wingfield Park, down to the playground there, because it's disgusting. When are we going to clean this up? Other cities don't have this problem. These are the nicest parks, the flagship parks of our cities, and we allow them to be destroyed with trash and people camping. It's completely unacceptable, and I want to know where the police are. Why is littering allowed in city parks? Why is it overlooked? I mean, you could, I've heard people say the justification that, well, they take care of their stuff. These people aren't taking care of their stuff at all. There's trash everywhere. And like I said, it's getting into the river and going downstream and destroying ecosystems. So I really just want to see something being done about it, and I want to see that, at least, at least see some effort to solve the problem. I don't even see anybody trying to do anything about it, even trying. And that's my call. My name's Robert Hours. My phone number is 915-490-4314. Email is robert@yahoo.com. Feel free to contact me, but I want to see this problem solved. It's unacceptable. Thank you. Bye.
It should be noted for the record, we received general correspondence prior to 4:00 p.m. yesterday as three letters in support, one letter in opposition, 17 letters of concern for various items. This correspondence has been submitted to the Reno City Council and is a part of the official record. And with that, Madam Vice Mayor, we have no additional public comment. We're moving on to Item A4, Approval of the Agenda.
Thank you so much. We'll go to our manager Thornley to find out if there's anything that we need to do with the agenda.
There's nothing, Madam Vice Mayor, that we need to do with today's agenda. However, I do want to flag for the group that we have an item on here later that will require a supermajority vote of the body, and so that might need to be continued when we get there if we don't pick up an extra member of the board.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Who to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say, is that right?
Aye.
That was the overall agenda approval?
Oh, the agenda. I'm sorry. I apologize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we're moving on to our B items for the consent agenda.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. Consent agenda. Do we, I'll go to you, Council. Okay, you know what? If there's anyone that has anything to take off the consent agenda, I don't. Is anyone else? I don't see anyone else. So is there, thank you so much. Well, now we'll, and there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk?
All right, we're moving on to our 10:00 a.m. public hearings. Item C1, Lear Theater Purchase.
So, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, please.
Let's go a little out of order. Let's push this to the end of the agenda and see if we can't pick up another member of the body.
Okay. I think that works great.
Okay, so we're going to move on to Item C2, which is an ordinance introduction to be read by the city attorney for LDC 22-00001.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Carl Hall for the record. This is ordinance introduction, bill number 7184, case number LDC 22-00001. 5030 Las Briesas Boulevard rezoning. Ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled "Zoning Rezoning," a plus or minus 1.531-acre site from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use suburban. The site is located on the southwest corner of Las Briesas Boulevard and north McCarran Boulevard. Subject site has a master plan land use designation of suburban mixed-use. Word five.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing and let the record reflect that the city council is opening the public hearing on items. Items, can I have help with that?
C2.
C2. Thank you. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given and any correspondence received?
Madam Vice Mayor, proper notice was given, and we did receive one voicemail and correspondence, which we will go ahead and play now.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Larry Kramer. I live on 3690 Bryan Street, Reno, and I am against this rezoning on Las Briesas Boulevard because the traffic there is heavy now and it's just going to increase the traffic. And if you check your history, you'll see that there have been multiple accidents at the corner of Las Briesas and McCarran Boulevard. So, like I said, I'm against this at this time. My number is 775-750-1092. Thank you.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment.
Thank you so much. Can I quickly ask, before we go there, does anyone have any disclosures? Okay, none. Okay, so what about a staff presentation?
Madam Vice Mayor, I'm not in need of a staff presentation. I'll defer to my other members on the board, though.
I agree.
Move to her first.
Second.
Oh, do I need to close the public comment? Do I need to close anything first? I'm sorry.
Nope, I think we're good to move forward with the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second by members Jarden and Reese. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to Item C3, which is the 2021 caper. We have Monica Cochran here to give a staff presentation. Give us just a minute to get it loaded.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'll let the record reflect that the city council is opening the public hearing on this item. And was proper notice given and any correspondence received? Madam Clerk?
Proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay. Are there any disclosures, Council? There's no disclosures? Okay. There we go.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Vice Mayor.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That recommendation.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Reese and seconded by Councilmember Jarden. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Jarden?
Yes.
Right. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was over talking. So there's a motion and a second. Any other conversation, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Monica.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your work, so we want to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're moving on to Item D1, Discussion and Acceptance on ERA 2.
Thank you. Let me get there.
Okay. Wasn't expecting that.
Okay, and Ms. Cochran, I don't know if you know that your speaker is on. So, okay, we're on to, did you say we're on D1, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, does anyone desire a staff report?
I would like a brief presentation, although it doesn't need to be very much. I just would like to know from Ms. Cochran, just a little bit about what the plan is in terms of, I understand we have to receive the money, and certainly I believe we will accept it, but Ms. Cochran, I don't need much. I just would like to hear from you, and it's always a privilege to hear from you.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay, good morning. I have a presentation. I won't give it, but the plan is, with this round, to keep the money in-house. As you know, councilmembers, with the last round of funding, we allocated most of the money to the Reno Housing Authority, and we kept about $1.5 million in-house. To date, we have expended nearly most of the money, and RHA will have spent all of their money by the end of this month, and the city program will have expended all of our funds by the end of next month. Since we expanded our rental and deposit assistance program back in May of '20, we've spent about $2 million, well, we spent $2 million about for that fiscal year. So with these ERA 2 funds, the sunset date is in 2025, so that gives us several years to spend the money, and it is anticipated that keeping these funds in-house, we will be able to allocate them in the timeframe given to us by the Treasury. And those funds are also for those folks at 80% or less than area median. They give us a little bit more flexibility than our HUD funds, which are 60 and 30% AMI, and we can pay many more months of rent with these funds. We can pay up to 15 months of rent, deposits, utility, things of that nature.
Thank you.
I, sorry, in the presentation, if we go forward a few slides just for your reference, we have some maps in here that shows where the majority of the we have some maps in here that shows where the majority of the funds have been spent over the last, well, with this program, RHA's contract came to council in May, so they've spent their funds since May until now, and then we started funding our ERA 1 program in June. So, it's just been a few months that we've spent these funds. So, the first map here is just our CDBG wards, and you could see that the majority of the CDBG eligible households live in Ward 3. If we go to the next map, you can see here that the number of households and the amount of money spent corresponds to the last CDBG map. So, we can see that the city's, I guess, low to moderate income population are the ones that are mostly receiving these ERA 1 funds. That was just a little update on where the money has been spent. With the different colors in the map, you can see there has been money spent all over the city, and the darker colors represent the majority of the spending.
Ms. Cochran, if I may, just so I understand, can you just give me an idea of how someone goes about qualifying to access the funds? Meaning, I am someone living in Reno in one of these wards or zip codes that you've identified. I have the 80/20 calculation met. How do I receive the funds? How do people know how to access them?
So, in around May, when we expanded our deposit and rental assistance program, we also instituted an online portal called Neighborly. It's very easy to use. If you go online and just search Reno Housing, you'll get a link either for RHA or for us. If you get onto the city's page, there is an icon that says rental assistance. You click on it, and it takes you directly into the application. It's very easy. You can do it on your phone, a computer. You can take pictures and upload documents, and then it just automatically notifies our staff, and then they get in contact with the individual requesting rent. And in some cases, folks just, you know, it's easy for them to complete the application. Other times, it's not, and they need a little more handholding. And I have two staff members and two part-time staff members that are assisting folks with that. If they go to RHA, RHA also has a online application, and then they have staff also working on it, but I was notified by them just the other day that because of the amount of applications in the pipeline, anyone else for their program requesting assistance will be put on a waitlist.
So, if you can, please, can you just give me sort of anecdotally who you're seeing as benefiting from the program? Because I know the work you're doing is good and meaningful. I just don't know enough about how they, so now you've explained how they access the program. Who is coming to you for assistance? I mean, how are we helping people to stay housed?
So, because we have different funding sources that go into the rental assistance program, we see folks from 0% AMI up to 80%. Our typical programs don't go up to 80 for rental assistance. They go up to 60% AMI, but these Treasury funds are the funds that came to us through the Treasury, go up to 80%. There are some stipulations that you had to somehow been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. That description is much broader now than it was with ERA 1 funds. And I would say, so the majority of the people coming through are 80% or less than of area median. There are folks that have either, you know, we had one last week that I had, sometimes I have to look at them just to make more judgment calls based on their circumstances. And there was one that had got COVID-19 in the beginning of the pandemic and now is suffering still from the lingering effects and has not been able to work, you know, as much as they did in the past. So, their income has been decreased, and they just can't, they can't keep up with their bills. We do, I mean, we get phone calls every week. I had one a couple weeks ago of a gentleman in, with three kids and his wife in a single, or in a studio that was about to get evicted. The sheriff was supposed to come that day. I have some great staff that jumped through many hoops to help get the guy qualified, talked to the landlord, and we got them a promissory notice so that, you know, they didn't get locked out of their unit. I was actually on the phone with the gentleman when the sheriffs came knocking on the house, on the apartment next door, and I could hear the fear in his voice because he thought they were knocking on his door. They weren't, and, you know, that would have been a husband and wife and three children that would have been evicted that day. So, there are some emergencies like that, and then there's also folks that maybe needed three months or some past rent and then got back on their feet or an additional three months. And like I said, with the Treasury or with the ERA 2 funds, we can go up to 15 months.
Well, Monica or Ms. Cochran, please let me thank you for the work that you're doing. It is meaningful. I know that when we talk, you are often sharing difficult stories of hardship, and I'm so happy that the city of Reno, through your office, is able to help folks in these crisis moments. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'll move to approve staff recommendations.
Let me just ask if we have public comment? Madam Clerk?
Madam Vice Mayor, we have none.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Reese and seconded by Council member Jarden. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, and I'm sure the record shows that Councilmember Delgado is here. So, that's great. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, this is Doug Thornley. It would be my recommendation that because we have picked up an additional member of the body here in Councilman Delgado, that we circle back to C11 and C12.
Okay, perfect. So, Madam Clerk, see, there it is. Okay, so I would assume, or I won't assume, anything, does council desire a staff presentation? I don't hear anything from that. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, it should be noted that these items were noticed correctly, and we have no public comment for either of these items.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. No discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There's a motion. Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Reese and seconded by Councilmember Delgado. Any other conversation, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Now, do we have to go to?
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. Just for clarification, can we make sure that we have affirmative votes from Mayor Sheevy and Councilmember Delgado?
Councilmember Delgado was the seconder.
Okay, I just didn't know, it just looked like they were muted, so I just wanted to make sure we had that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can we do a roll call vote? Councilmember Delgado?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Jarden?
Aye.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Sheevy?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
All right, with that, we are going to move on to item D, as in David, 2, acceptance of the audit for the fire department.
Okay, let me get there. Apologize. Okie doke. Does the council desire a staff presentation? I don't see anyone raising their hand. All those, let's see, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, we have no public comment registered.
Okay, no other questions? May I have a motion?
Move to approve staff recommendations.
Thank you. That was members Reese and Delgado. On the motion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. This is going very nice. Thank you all.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, we're on item E1, which is an ordinance introduction to be read by our city attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. This is ordinance introduction, bill number 7185, ordinance to amend Title 8, Chapter 8.18 of the Reno Municipal Code titled Weapons, Creating a New Ordinance, RMC 18.18.035, unlawful use of a whip, together with other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Do we desire a staff presentation, council members? I hear none. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have public comment on this item. Lilly Baron.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Thornley, and good morning, virtual council members. This, my name is Lilly Baron, L-A-L-Y-B-A-R-A-N, for the record, and my comment is on behalf of the ACLU of Nevada. We would like to thank you for taking the consideration of some of our concerns regarding the ordinance into account. We do, however, think that this perpetuates the criminalization of the unhoused. It is the community known for these whips, and it is mostly, if not only, the vulnerable community members experiencing homelessness and on the map that is drawn where the ordinance would be in place. It is a circle also around the largest concentration of these same community members. There are other less limiting considerations that could be made, such as an opt-in for residences or businesses within a certain footage or something like this that could apply, or maybe a feeless permit that folks could easily access to obtain their whip. We appreciate the time and discussion that occurred, obviously, to evaluate this issue. However, we wish and would like to encourage you to take more time and discussion to evaluate an improved approach to community care rather than the enforcement and displacement of our unhoused community members. It seems that if more time were spent thinking of how to better accommodate these vulnerable citizens rather than time spent on how to criminalize these citizens and get them out of sight, that we would all be in a much better place. And with my remaining time as a citizen, I would just like to say this is the second time I've had to publicly comment on the inappropriateness of having your camera off, holding public office, and leading a meeting. I know that teachers, students, and everyone else have had to adopt to virtual meetings, and it is commonplace that those facilitating the meeting have their cameras on in respect to the individuals attending the meeting. As well as from a contamination standpoint, I don't really see how it makes sense to have the most people in person and the least people on screen, perhaps if, where there could be some more transparency as to why exactly we are in this dystopian, as my comrade Ilya said, setup that maybe we would be a little bit more compassionate towards whatever the issue that must be going on is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, for the record, we did receive correspondence from, as 19 letters in favor of this ordinance. The correspondence has been submitted to the Reno City Council and is a part of the official record.
Thank you so much. Any other discussions or questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to refer and for a second reading and for adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by members Reese and Jarden. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, moving on to item F1, ordinance adoption to be read by the city attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6604, ordinance of the city council, the city of Reno, amending the redevelopment plan for the downtown project area, RDA 1, extending the plan an additional 15 years to 2043, 60 years after the date on which the original redevelopment plan was adopted, in accordance with NRS 279.3438 1A and NRS 279.608, to facilitate payment of existing debt, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you. Does council desire a staff presentation? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, we have none.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion made by Councilmember Jarden, seconded by Councilmember Reese. Any other questions, conversation, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay.
All right, moving on to item F2, ordinance adoption to be read by the city attorney.
I'll take it away, Madam Vice Mayor. So, ordinance adoption.
Yes.
Ordinance number 6605, ordinance of the city council, the city of Reno, amending redevelopment plan for redevelopment project area number 2, to authorize the use of tax increment to make interfund loans pursuant to NRS 354.6118 to the downtown project area to facilitate payment of existing debt, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank you so much. Does council desire a presentation on this one?
No.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, we have none.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Reese, seconded by Councilmember Jarden. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, back to you.
All right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and open the redevelopment agency board.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and take roll.
Thank you.
Councilmember Breckus, absent at this time. Councilmember Dorr, absent at this time. Councilmember Delgado, absent at this time. Councilmember Weber?
Here.
Councilmember Jarden?
Here.
Councilmember Reese?
Here.
Mayor Sheevy?
Here.
Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board.
Thank you.
We have no public comment for item L2. We're moving on to item L3, which is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second? All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Item L4, redevelopment agency board minutes from July 28.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item L5, board announcements.
Nothing for me.
Item L6, there is no general public comment, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency board.
Second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
All right, so with that, we're back on item H1, which is council announcements.
Madam Vice Mayor, I have one announcement. On Saturday, the city of Reno is hosting, in partnership with the Reno Tennis Center, a free tennis and pickleball day for the families and the community. It's going to be from 10 to 1 at the Reno Tennis Center on Plumas. There'll be food trucks and free tennis and pickleball, so it should be a very fun time. Certainly, everyone's welcome to come out.
That's great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on. Madam Clerk?
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, we're just looking at closing public comment, which we received one letter in support of a various item after 4:00 PM yesterday, and we have one voicemail, which we'll play now.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Alyssa Cortez. I am the program associate with Silver State Equality, a statewide I am the Program Associate with Silver State Equality, a statewide LGBTQ+ civil rights organization. I would like to submit public comment in support of agenda item B14. This would support the Third Annual Silver State Equality Awards. These funds will be used to continue the work for the organization's pro-equality priorities. Most importantly, efforts to create a healthy, just, and fully equal world for LGBTQ people. Thank you for your consideration on this item. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
With that, Madam Vice Mayor, we have no additional public comment and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thanks, you all. Thanks to our staff and everyone.